Test 1, 2, 1, 2. Test 1, 2, 1, 2.
Waiting for Brandon. She on her way? She's on her way? Is she on her way? You want to text her, okay. Can you text Maria? We're just giving everybody a minute to come into the room. This is a really special night and we wanted to make sure everything was just right. So I call this December 12th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On December 15th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. We will now have the presentation of colors by the Morrisville Fire and Rescue Pipes and Drums and the Morrisville Police and Fire Honor Guard. So council and staff will stand, feel free to stand if you wish. At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing until the honor guard departs the room. Go ahead, Cunnell. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So I will be delivering this evening's invocation. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to speak about our community, Morrisville. It's not just a place on a map, but a family we've chosen to be part of. We want everyone to feel empowered to contribute. This means sharing your ideas for new programs, joining our stewardship efforts, and simply saying thank you to our dedicated staff. Together, we can make a difference. Our residents have entrusted us to lead. We hear your message. Keep doing what you're doing and do more of it. We are committed to enhancing the quality of life for everyone, embracing innovation and new ideas to make Morrisville a better place for generations to come. Two core values guide us: dedication and innovation. We are dedicated to welcoming everyone, fostering inclusivity and enriching lives, not just for ourselves, but for our entire community. And by embracing innovation, we'll implement new ideas for a brighter future. Change is inevitable when we strive for improvement. It may be daunting, but we must remember, short-term inconvenience often leads to long-term benefits, just like traffic cones paving the way for smoother roads. Let's work together to identify the changes we want, find innovative solutions, and create a Morrisville where everyone can live connected and live well. Together, let's build a brighter Morrisville, our family, our future. I will now recognize tonight's Sergeant in Arms. Sergeant Strickland has 15 years' law enforcement experience, 13 years with the town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition numerous times. At this time, it's my pleasure to recognize some elected officials that are here in the room with us tonight. First, I'd like to recognize Tammy Brunner, our Register of Deeds. There's the left. We also have Caroline Sparks. Caroline Sparks representing Deborah Ross's office. Cheryl Stallings, Wake County Commissioner. Diki Adamson, Wake County Commissioner. Don Mile, Wake County Commissioner. We have Tyler Swanson from the Wake County Board of Education. Senator Sidney Batch. Representative Maria Serrania. And Knightdale Mayor Jessica Day. I apologize if I've missed anyone. Is there someone that I failed to recognize? Okay, wonderful. We are honored with your presence, everyone. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policies to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Would any council member like to share anything at this time? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
I make the motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I have a motion in a couple of seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. There are five items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution to unseal closed session minutes, approval of November 2023 Town Council meeting minutes, resolution approving the Wake County non-cash rebates, tax exemptions, and penalties reports, resolution appointing the Chair and Vice Chair for the PZB, and a resolution accepting DOJ grant funding a police department detective. Would any council member like to remove any of those from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda?
Make the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well, 7-0. I'm sorry.
Sarika Bonsal.
I apologize. Sarika Bonsal, our Kerry Council, newest Kerry Council member is also in the audience. Thank you for being here. Reminds me of the first time I led a meeting after becoming mayor and I forgot to recognize Donna Fender because she was sitting on the other side of the room than the other elected official. So I apologize. We are glad that you're here this evening. Item nine, administrative reports. There is one administrative report tonight, a DISG golf update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
There were no comments received via email for public address and there are no individuals signed up to give in-person comments.
Okay. It is our practice to ask if there's anyone here in the room who would like to address this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the reason that I think most of us are here this evening. We will now facilitate the oath of office ceremony for recently elected officials. The first member to be sworn in will be Councilmember Satish Caramella to be sworn in by our North Carolina Senator Sidney Batch. Left hand down, right hand up.
No.
Can you help him? Yep, there you go. No, that's right.
I, Satish Caramella.
I, Satish Caramella.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And to the authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to.
And that I will endeavor to.
Support, maintain, and defend.
Support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of the said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent with. With the Constitution.
Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Satish Caramella.
I, Satish Caramella.
Do swear that I will.
Do swear that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
Of the town of Morrisville.
Of the town of Morrisville.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Wow. First of all, thank you so much for coming and gracing this occasion. It means a lot to see all the people here and my sincere thank you from the bottom of my heart. I will start with saying I would like to thank the voters of Morrisville for selecting me, for giving me the term for more years. And I do not take this very lightly. And I will work to ensure what is in the best interest of the town, both for our residents and the businesses. To start with, I would first like to thank Dr. and Mrs. Sharma. They have been here coming to my swearing-in my third one and since 2015, 2019, and 2023. And I got to tell, Dr. Sharma is a good luck charm. He's 97 years. And Mrs. Sharma. Mrs. Sharma is 90. Their dedication to the town of Morrisville and to the entire Indian community is mind-blowing, you know? And I would like to thank from the bottom of my heart and I wish in all my future, you will be still there doing my vote altogether. Then I would like to thank Senator Batch. Senator Batch, I got to tell you a little bit of side story. I saw Senator Batch, I think, six or seven years ago when we have Tammy Brunner, who was leading, the lead NC at the time. And I had got the opportunity to spend two days with her on the training. And something was going on, like they showed a picture of a convict, you know, a black convict with two correctional, white correctional officers. And we were, they were asking us to talk more about it. Everyone was talking their own views. And when it came to Senator Batch, she said, "This is where exactly the bias starts. Why is it a black convict with two white cops? Why can't it be otherwise?" And that is the implicit bias. And like from that day, you know, I was her big fan, you know? And I still remember that. And she has been a great advocate for our area and especially the attorney and the law that she practices helps a lot of the families. And I'm very grateful, Sidney, for taking this opportunity and making this happen. And then I would like to thank my peers, each one of them, you know? Steve, I know your six o'clock emails start off and you have great ideas. You shoot off and always good to hear and good ideas and thanks for my support. Donna, thank you because you allowing me to talk about domestic violence meant a lot to me that day. Thank you for doing that. And TJ, thanks for your leadership and for what you did. And coming to Liz, I don't know, like she's like pretty much behind me. I said, "Hey, we have this event, we have that event," you know? Like it's not like, you know, I'm very easy to miss out on many things because of work and balance and she keeps me straight. I would say that. Vicky is more of my tactical person and I have to like brainstorm something. So I reach out to Vicky and I say, "Hey, this is how it is. How do we go about?" She's a big closer, I would say, like, you know? She knows how to get it done. And, and, you know, so much energy every time. Let's go do it. So it's not a single kind of a thing. It is who we are and what we work on. Everyone is passionate in their own fields and together we bring together what is in the best interest of the town. And, and it is okay to disagree in many times, but it's important to see that we keep things moving forward. And I'm very, very fortunate to be a part of this team. And then I would like to thank the people from the county, you know? I, to be honest, like Caroline and I go a long way and it was, it is, people like Caroline or Tammy Brunner or, you know, you can say Vicky, Commissioner Stallings or me. It is, it is amazing that the alliances that we have done over a period of time only helps us to make us look better. And when people call me, I cannot do anything. If it is something to do with the Register of Deeds or a debt certificate, I'll reach out to Tammy. If it is anything to do with passports or immigration issue, I'll reach out Deborah Ross's office and Caroline is the first person to help me out. And because that's the need of what our community is. And anything to do with the county, you know? We have, you know, Vicky and Shanika, Dawn, and Cheryl, and even Susan's. They, they give us so much support at the back that, you know, we know, like, I feel, okay, I'm empowered that I know people at the back that who can help. And Chris Agarty and Tyler, you know? Schools are so, so important for our community and especially from an immigrant coming, only on education, it's only the education that we can impart to our kids. And so it's a very touchy point, but at the same time, the most important point, that we invest in our kids. And I salute them for the county and the school board for doing what they do to make our area one of the best schools. And especially when we got Parkside Elementary as one of the top 10 schools along with the others, it means a lot. And just today, we did groundbreaking for Parkside Middle. So like Commissioner Adams said, when she joined, there was an ask for schools. Now, school, it's raining schools in Morrisville. You know, we are getting two high schools and a middle school and a moron, you know? Like so, all right. So, and also I would like to thank Senator Choudhury, you know? Like he was not able to make because, because of the school board people, they put the rally chambers to bring in meeting at five o'clock. So a lot of the people are juggling among them. Now, he has been a continuous support to me and being very helpful in guiding me what to do. And then I would also like to recognize, you know, Sarika Bonsal, you know, the newest member of the Kerry Town Council. It was a good fight that she put up and I'm sure now that is all behind and get into the governance and it would be a ride from here and that I would enjoy working with her. Then I would like to thank all my friends who are there because I am who they are. And also I would take a minute to recognize Donald Zinkin. He's the Wake Mead CEO and I'm on the Wake Mead Hospital Board. So we have Tad McCarthy, who's the Chair of, Tad, you want to raise your hand so that these people? And we have the Chief Operating Officer, Tom Goff. You know, when I call him and it is mostly issues that our constituents really need and they are always there to help and it means a lot to me. So said that, I also want to thank my GSK friends and a lot of the people from the HOA. You know, while I'm doing other things, they're always keeping my flag and fort guarded and going on. Now, I want to thank members of my campaign. You know, I would say I have a big think tank. I would like to acknowledge Perry Woods, Robert Crawford, Sigatjusen, Kristin Kushner, Matt Calabria, Virin, Manoj Lalit, Bharat, Kalapas, Yalu, Shavi, Sayan Ram. So, and the list goes on. There's not a single list because they are my biggest critics and they only help me to get better. And that is what I like about them. So. And I got to acknowledge my class, high school classmate Raj. Raj and I went to the same high school, same area, shared the same data board too, which is kind of unique. And he and I, you know, work on all the data analytics along with In Shannon and Ally. So, and I should not go unnoticed by saying my campaign core ground team. You know, it is a solid team that runs, you know, Sunny, Magnath, Wasan, Ravi, and Ally Kavan, you know, Anil, and tons of people who basically, close to 150 volunteers who basically worked and made me look good, but actually it is their effort that they did, not mine, you know? They would say, "Hey, that street doesn't have a sign. Hey, did you knock that neighborhood?" So it was, it was a pretty much a well-oiled mission and if I am here, it is because of them. And I would also like to thank two volunteers who are really special, Leila and Ashley. If you want to get up, please. They are from Wake Forest. They're from Wake Forest High School. They volunteered and they door-knocked 400 homes in a day.
How they did.
And they were so, they were so excited that they said, "We will basically take care of one polling station and from morning seven to evening seven," they were, you know, receiving. Thank you so much. Then also I would like to thank other organizations, you know, NCAT. NCAT, you know, we have Shruti here, who basically got an entire army of people door-knocking and creating the grassroots momentum. Thank you, Shruti. Then we have people from NC Impact and NCIA, who basically were the force behind in working together. And last but not the least, I would say, I would like to thank my parents, you know? Even.
Love those parents, really too.
My dad, Dr. Amaro. And my mom, Dr. Oini Davi. So, so it is, it is funny, like, you know? Today's event, and my mom said, "What food are they making?" And I said, "Mom, that's a town event. Let's not interfere into that." I said, "No, no." Like, so I was forced to ask what the menu was and, and basically she said, "No, I'm making three more dishes." Because we have a lot of people who are coming, I don't want to feed them, like go hungry. And this morning, she made all the food that you see, she single-handedly made that. And there have been a driving force for me, you know? My dad gets more nervous, "You're not door-knocking, you're not doing anything," you know, kind of a thing. But thank you because they are a force. And I would like to talk about Wyba. I was just, you want to get up, Wyba? I still remember the day when my first picture was, he was a fourth grader and he was shorter than me. Now, now he's taller than me and all set to take, I don't know where he will go to, but I'm sure, you know, North Carolina School of Science and Math makes good students and they'll, he'll go somewhere really good. And I would like also to acknowledge that I have missed so many events in the last 80 years, you know? His rehearsals, especially late, Enlow and Carnage was on Tuesdays and I had to miss them. And the kids take a lot of toll and these are occasions where I have to publicly acknowledge how much it means. This election was very tough on me because we has a college app, like deadlines for November 2nd. And so we're working on that. November 7th was the election and the, I did not know like which one to put. Like my more worry was more for him than the elections. And the pressure was building up. He's not at home, he's at the dorm. So that makes it things harder. But Wyba, thank you, you know, for all that you do. And I know I was, I, but, you know, thank you. So I, I want, I don't want to go on, but I would like to also acknowledge, you know, that we have worked very hard as a council and that is not possible without the support of our staff. You know, I would first start with saying, if at all, who has kept me straight is our previous town manager, Martha Page. She's, she, she is, she is like my second mom here in the council and, but I can get past my first mom here, but it's hard to get with her, you know? And she has been a And she has been a mentor, a friend, and always helpful to take the right steps in the right direction. And obviously the staff here, like, you know, Brandon, Giselle, Jeffrey, and I have, I'm more inclined to Jeannie and, you know, Nathan is our fire chief. And, and the whole department here is, it's like, it's, it's a pleasure working, you know, because every day you learn. And if at all, I learned some advice of some legal thing is because of this Yoda Frank Gray here, you know. He, he has seen like two, three decades of people and, but he never talks. And I said, Frank, they're paying you to just sit for eight hours. And, but, but even if they give me, I cannot keep quiet, you know, I had to talk something. But that he's, he keeps us straight and thank you, Frank, you know, it means a lot. And so I would conclude by saying, we continue to work at all levels. It is just not a council, like I mentioned in a WakeMed. And I try to go to different boards, which are challenging to me. It's only because it helps me to see what we can do for our constituents. Joining WakeMed Board was an eye-opener for me. We know only as what people talk about, oh, hospitals are expensive. But when you see from the top down, the things that happen and the amount of regulations and in accreditations that they go through, it is just humongous. And people like Donald and their entire team does a fabulous job and I am just impressed. And it is, there's a humanity factor and he being a four-star Admiral and still down to earth, you know, I learn every day from him. Thank you, Donald. And, and, and also like, you know, being on LCLM and other board, being the Chair of the Legislative Assembly only helps us, what can we do? It's continuous learning process. What can we do? How can we help the town? And what new ideas can we bring? And that is who we are. And said that, it's all about human relationship, you know, I had, it's a continuous learning for me. Joining the Friday Fellow, you know, was a great experience. All I say this is, we are here and the highest priority is our people and the businesses and we are proud to say we are Morrisville. Thank you so much.
The next member to be sworn in will be Councilmember Ann Rabadi, to be sworn in by our North Carolina House Representative, Maria Cervana.
Actually, may I take a brief moment? So first, I am North Carolina State Representative, Maria Cervana, and I want to congratulate Liz Johnson and Satish Garamella and say a few words about Ann Rabadi. But before that, Councilwoman Garamella, your mother is your campaign secret. You have her cook anytime because it'll convert anybody to Team Garamella. But just very briefly, I want to say, I'm so proud of Ann Rabadi. Yes, yes. We all are. And I've been here from the start for you, before you were even thinking about running for office. And we're all a family, including Betsy and your own family and a lot of the people here on your council, we see Morrisville as our family. And I know, Ann Rabadi, you take that very seriously in how you serve us here in Morrisville. And I know you're going to be amazing to come. So, without further ado. Please raise your right hand. I, Ann Rabadi.
I, Ann Rabadi.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are and may be.
Which are and may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ann Rabadi.
I, Ann Rabadi.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will and truly execute.
That I will and truly execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
Of the town of Morrisville.
Of the town of Morrisville.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill and ability.
Of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Okay. In a startling departure from my usual practice, I have some notes. So, I of course want to thank my family, my friends. I remember when I stood up here four years ago and I looked out on a sea of faces and I didn't know anyone. And I feel so much different today when I'm looking out and I see, and the people that I see smiling back at me are acquaintances that became friends, friends that became better friends. And this has been really an amazing four years for me. I would like to thank my family most of all. My husband Chuck, who famously said, for God's sake, Ann, you know you want to do it again, just run. My campaign manager, Betsy, without whom, let me make you the solemn promise, I would not be standing here. Betsy worked tirelessly to get me elected. She supported and was, and encouraged and helped me every single minute of every day. I could never say enough about Betsy. Thank you, Betsy. I, my children, only Charlie's here, but there's four others that are in various stages of being young adults, and my friends that are here that helped me with pep talks and postcards and every possible thing that you have to do to get elected to public office. And of course, I want to thank the staff, our staff, who are always amazing and without whom we, I would not be looking back with pride on four years of accomplishments. That's not me for once. I know usually it would be me, but it's not me. And my fellow councilmembers, you know, nobody does this alone and I, you know, if I say that I'm looking back with pride on four years, it's four years of collective accomplishments of our council. This is the second time that the voters have handed us back the same council and I, that is so gratifying. And, you know, and Satish mentioned other elected officials, you know, it is really hard to run for public office. It is really hard to serve in public office. And without the support of some of the elected officials that are here tonight, Vicky Adamson, of course, always a huge supporter, Cheryl. Cheryl and I ran together in our first campaign, she and Apex and I in Morrisville. Gail Adcock, who couldn't be here tonight, but I think we all, we all know everything that Gail and Deborah Ross have done for our town. And Maria Cervana, who, as she said earlier, she didn't say it quite this way, but she could have. I, I don't think I would be here without Maria Cervana. Maria was the first person who told me that I should run for public office. She was the person who hounded me until I did in fact run for public office. She, you know, it's really, it's always really hard for me to ask people to do things for me. It's really quite a personal failure. But I, you know, I'd never have to ask Maria to do anything for me. She just shows up. And whether it's a letter to all of her constituents, reminding them about the election and saying nice things about me, you know, whether it's showing up at a house party on a day when she's the busiest person in the world, you know, whether it's the phone call just when I needed to say, you know, hey, I know you were out campaigning this weekend, how many houses did you hit? That's fantastic. No matter what the number is, if I hit 20 houses or I hit 200. By the way, did anybody get the names of those girls that hit 400 houses in one day? Because next time, those, next time around, those girls are my, well, then you should have introduced them, pal, because, you know, now we're all fighting for them. To be entrusted with public office is humbling. I'm very grateful for the opportunity and I'm mindful every time I step up here of the responsibility and the trust that you've placed in me. I love being on the council, that is not a surprise to anyone who's ever talked to me about it. I love the fact, I love the impact that we've made on our town over the past four years. I love that it is more inclusive, more welcoming, more environmentally friendly, that we've, that we've advanced so many of the initiatives that you told me that you care about and that I care about too. And finally, I know that some of you all did not vote for me. And that's okay because I represent you too. I am available to listen to you, I'm happy to help you, and I'm proud to represent you for another four years.
Our final oath of office for the evening will be Mayor Pretend Liz Johnson, to be
So, I, Liz Johnson.
I, Liz Johnson.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemn, oh my gosh. After, you would think at the seventh time I'd get it right. Sorry, one more time.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Liz Johnson.
I, Liz Johnson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As councilmember of the town of Morrisville.
As councilmember of the town of Morrisville.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So, being last has a lot of advantages because everything has been said, so I could just do a ditto. Satish has recognized and thanked everybody in the room for me, so thank you, Satish. And Ann has done a fabulous job as well. So, I do have some people I want to thank. And first, I need to thank Knightdale Mayor Jessica Day for being here to help me tonight. So I, I have had the, the privilege of serving on many local and statewide boards and commissions. And I currently serve on a couple. And that allows me to meet some really fabulous elected officials across the state of North Carolina. And I will tell you, we are in good hands. There are some incredible people out there doing some phenomenal work for their citizens across the state. And when I think of those phenomenal people that I worked with, and some right here in council and in the town of Morrisville, I think about what I learn from each and every one of them. And each of them helps me kind of up my game to be even better, to be a better elected official. And when I think of those folks, Mayor Jessica Day comes to mind and is at the top of that list. And I want to thank her sincerely for being here, to coming across the county to be here tonight, which is not an easy feat, if you've ever done that, from here to Zebulon is like another state. And so I thank her very much and I, I know we clapped for her before, but she was also just reelected as Mayor of Knightdale. She is doing incredible job. So I get a bonus tonight, I get to celebrate her as well. She is doing an incredible job. I admire her deeply. She is doing work for her citizens, her leadership, the way she leads with compassion and the ability to bring folks together, I admire very much. So it, it really is a pleasure that I get to celebrate you tonight, Jessica, so thank you for being here. So I also want to thank the citizens of Morrisville, the residents of Morrisville, who voted in every election and have entrusted me with your vote. Your confidence and trust in me is humbling and I am indebted to each and every one of you. I am grateful that you have given me this gift and I do consider it a gift to be able to serve you again for a seventh term here in the town of Morrisville. That is, yeah. I get to serve in a town that I love, just like each and every one of you do, and that is a gift. So thank you for that. I also get, not only do I get to serve each and every one of our residents and our business community, but I get to work alongside the best municipal staff, hands down, anywhere. If you do not, yes. Our staff never ceases to amaze me in what they can accomplish and how they do it with such professionalism and grace and dignity. And they do it for us, for each and every one of us that lives here in the town of Morrisville. They are proud of their work and they do it to make our lives and our community better. So I thank them very much and I thank you all for allowing me to work alongside them again for another four years. I also want to thank, obviously, my family. And this is where I'm going to get emotional, council knows I get emotional every, every once in a while. My, my mom is here, my sisters and their husbands, my niece is here. I could not do this without them. Their support is invaluable. And for those of you that might vote at Morrisville Elementary, you know my mom, she's out there every four years. And she, and for those of you that chat with her on Election Day, she passes on each and every. every one of your messages to me. So I hear, I hear it all. Sometimes I get the phone call and I have to get on the phone with someone, and that's what it's all about. So I thank them for being here and for their support always. And then my girls, and I call them girls, and I have to stop doing that. If I ever call you a girl, that's an endearing term to me. So these two women, these two young women, who are extraordinary, are my pride and joy. I told you I was going to get emotional. They have grown up, they were six and nine when I was first elected. So they've grown up in this world of local government, of politics, of whatever you want to call it, campaigning, all of it. And they are two extraordinary women in their own right, doing amazing work to change the world. And I am, Kevin and I are so proud of them. And then last, I have to thank my husband, who I would not be here without him. He, his support is probably the most valuable to me. He has never, ever said no to anything I wanted to do. And that has meant a lot to me. Even when it was hard for him and he probably didn't want it, he has always supported me, not only in these 24 and now 28 years of service, but in everything I've ever accomplished in my life. So I owe a lot to him as well. So thank you all. And in case, let me, I'm going to leave, leave it here. When I was first elected in 1999, I was so hopeful and I was full of optimism and I was excited. And here I am, and I never thought I'd be here in 24 years later, by the way, but here I am 24, four years later. And I will tell you, I am more hopeful and more excited, because I know now what can be accomplished. I have accomplished, with a lot of other people here in the town of Morrisville, accomplished a great deal. So I'm even more excited, because I know there's more to come. We have such opportunity ahead of us here in the town of Morrisville. And I'm looking forward to the future. I hope you all are, too. And I know we, as a council, are dedicated as a team to work and make sure those opportunities, we take advantage of all of them for you, to continue to make Morrisville the best place to live, work, play, learn, and we'll add more as we go forward. So thank you all very much.
So while the Mayor Pro Tem is doing her documents, I would like to recognize someone who just arrived a few moments ago, our Chair of our Wake County Board of Education, Chris Haggerty. Is there in the back room, if you wanted to sit down? As was mentioned, there was a groundbreaking at Parkside Elementary today, which will also serve as the first two-years location for the Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology. And that took a lot of work from staff. I'd like to recognize Martha Page, who really led that effort and made that happen. So much collaboration has happened in the town of Morrisville. And it's really our staff that makes that possible. So really want to acknowledge that. Now, we're going to take about a half hour to celebrate these members who just got reelected and who are now continuing to serve the town. So we're going to reconvene at about 7:30. So please enjoy each other's company and enjoy the food. Welcome back. We are now at Item 13, selection of Mayor Pro Tem. As our next order of business, we will elect our Mayor Pro Tem. I want to share that I had a nice conversation with Councilmember Guy Ramella earlier this week, in which he assured me that if given the title Mayor Pro Tem, he would make our town, its people and its staff, and our staff, its, his priority. I believe that one of the most important things we can do as people and elected officials is to empower others and create more leaders, as many as we can. With that in mind, I look forward to working with him to fund positions, programs, and amenities, which our staff and our residents say are important, so that we can preserve and enhance the quality of life for everyone in our town. I would now like to make the motion to appoint Councilmember Ramella as Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
A second motion.
A motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, Ramella. Would you like to say a few words, sir? That's not the reason I voted for him. Would you like to share any thoughts, sir?
I would like, I think, a few people wanted to say, and then I'll talk. Okay, go ahead, and then I'll talk.
Okay, just use your blue things. Councilmember Rao. If we could maybe close those back doors, that'd be helpful.
I just want to say that in 2015, Councilmember Ramella, after he was elected, sent me a note, which I read a lot. It said that he was grateful to sit at the council table with me and that he wanted to make a difference in the community. I often look back at that election and say that it was an important election, because we were able to bring him on the board and he's emerged as a well-respected leader across the region. And I just want to thank him for his service and think it'd be great for him to be the Mayor Pro Tem. I'll end with this. The toughest person on me in my life is usually my wife or my father and mother, who never tell me I do a good job. But I don't think Satish Ramella ever does. I was trying to think, when has he ever told me I've done a good job? But I couldn't find it. So I guess I have to keep, but I thank you for pushing me that way. And I think you do it, I know you do it because you care, but congratulations. So I was second in the motion and looking forward to your continued leadership.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So I've had the honor of being Mayor Pro Tem five different times over the last 24 years and worked alongside four different mayors. And twice, this council has selected me as the Mayor Pro Tem. So it's probably a total of 10 years I've served. And during that time, I've, I've learned and I've come to understand what's required of a Mayor Pro Tem. The skills, the capabilities, the experiences that you, that you have to have that are necessary to make you a really good Mayor Pro Tem. And so I wholeheartedly support Councilmember Ramella as Mayor Pro Tem. He's been elected three times now to the Morrisville Town Council. He's earned the trust and respect of the community. Over the eight years that Councilmember Ramella has served on council, I have seen him grow in his role as a Morrisville Councilmember. His leadership and his calm demeanor make him an effective and valued member of the Morrisville Town Council. Councilmember Ramella has forged really strong, effective relationships with elected officials at all levels of government, local, county, state, federal. He's forged these strong, effective relationships with our town partner organizations as well. His service on boards and committees over the past eight years have strengthened those relationships and has resulted in bringing additional projects and funding to Morrisville. And, and that's all really significant, because it's our residents that benefit from that work. And just the bottom line for me is Councilmember Ramella knows how to get things done. He's demonstrated his ability to collaborate. He's a really hardworking member of our team. And our residents benefit from your contributions, Councilmember Ramella. So I'm, I'm incredibly confident that Councilmember Ramella can serve as Mayor Pro Tem. More importantly, I trust him very much. And, and one, one other thing that I, I think, not one thing, but, you know, residents see the work that we do through our role on council. They, they don't often see the other work that we do. And Councilmember Ramella has, has worked beyond council to benefit our residents. He was instrumental in coordinating COVID vaccine events that distributed over 7,000 vaccines to our residents. He works closely with embassies and consulates to help our residents with their immigration processing. So it's, it's more, he goes above and beyond what we do here at council. So again, I'm incredibly confident in him serving as Mayor Pro Tem and I'm, I'm happy to support him in that role. I know he's going to do a great job.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
No, I think Vicki was first. Go ahead.
That's fine.
Thank you. It's hard to follow Liz, because she said so many good things. But having served as the Mayor Pro Tem for two years, I think I have a few insights to share as well. It's, it's an incredibly important role on the council, as you are responsible for working with all the council members closely. And you have to be listening and be the voice sometimes when they aren't around. So it's, it's a really important communication role, but it's also an alignment that is needed when you are the Mayor Pro Tem. I mean, we all are responsible for aligning, but I, I lean in a little bit more as Mayor Pro Tem. And I know, Satish, that you and I have talked about how that is so critical for an effective council. And I know that our current Mayor Pro Tem, Liz Johnson, really exemplified how that works well. And I know that you are ready for that challenge. So thank you for stepping forward and I wish you all success. And we will be communicating with you in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Satish, congratulations. You know, I, I appreciate certainly the insights of Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Scroggins-Johnson. I think it's really important to, you know, to not try to be Mayor Pro Tem like Liz did it, Mayor Pro Tem like Vicki did it. I think that if you bring your, your gifts, your strengths, your insights, your way of working to the Mayor Pro Tem role, I think that's how you're going to find that you'll be most, most successful. You know, everything these two obviously said about you is true. And, you know, I think that, you know, I think this is an opportunity for you to forge a different path and, you know, find your own way. And I wish you all the success. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Ramella.
It feels very odd, but I got to first thank each one of you. You know, it was something I was thinking that I could do it and I will do it. That is my thing. Once I commit to it, I will not go back. And I'll work hard to ensure, especially the role of Mayor Pro Tem, you know, dealing with, like, I, I saw the effectiveness, especially during the COVID, where you both coordinated so much to have things go around. There's, we can't talk more than three people, but going around. It, it was a classic, you know, like, that, that really made me feel like, you know, that is a good amount of work that you guys, combination of both, were able to achieve at the time. And I hope we don't have those kind of pandemics, but, you know, there are many other areas that we can work on and get a better consensus. And it's basically, for me, it's more how do you effectively work with the staff, you know, as a whole? Because I keep saying, if anyone on the council has at least seen four sessions, they know who is passionate on what areas. So it, and I am a big advocate, like, the staff, they do a good job. When it comes to us, it's just not a question of debate or talk on the dais. It should be a straight, you know, finish it. It's done. So, so that is, I will strive to ensure I can work with each one of you and also the staff, how to basically reduce our time on the chambers, you know, have a quicker decisions, so that we can effectively do more work and not get spiraled into some rabbit holes. So that is, that is, that is what I would try to bring to the table. And I'm thankful for the opportunity and I will not take it easily. I'll work hard for it. Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations. Yeah, I hope that we can become a, a yes and council, like we had in a retreat a few years ago, and take the slogan from Nike, just say, just do it. So we don't circle things a lot, we just decide and move on. So we'll lean on each other a lot to help us all do that. So thank you very much and congratulations. To that end, we have one action item this evening. It is a resolution appointing town council members to regional committee vacancies. Eric Smith, Town Clerk, will facilitate the item. And I believe that this is an updated resolution on the screen. If everyone wants to take a peek at it, let us know if we have any questions. I think everyone indicated that they were generally okay with this, but we can have any discussion that anyone chooses. Would you do us a favor and just read them out?
For the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Board, TJ Colley has been selected as the appointee, Anne Robati as the alternate, and Danielle Kittredge, Principal Planner, remains as the staff assigning. Central Pines Regional Council, Center of Core, Center of Region Enterprise, Donna Fender, the appointee, Vicki Scroggins-Johnson, the appointee, Michelle Stegall, Planning Director, the staff appoint, staff appointment. The Central Pines Regional Council Board of Delicates, Steve Rao, the appointee, Donna Fender, the alternate, Jordan Lake One Water, Liz Johnson, appointee, Ben Mills and Giselle Rodriguez, the staff appointments. Western Wake Partners Policy Advisory Committee, TJ Colley, appointee, Brandon Zudema, staff appointment.
At this time, I'd like to take a point of privilege and just note that Liz Johnson has become the Chair of the Jordan Lake One Water. After serving on that for a few years, she's been elevated into that space, which is really important, because water is one of the most important things that, for a region and a person. So I want to say congratulations to you on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Or would anyone like to make a motion to approve this as shown? Looks like we have head nods, so I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. So staff, could you go ahead and send us all the information about meeting times and everything for those things, just to refresh our memories? That'd be really helpful. Right now, we're at Item 14, or actually 15. That's Future Meetings, Events, and Community Engagement Opportunities. Please join us this Thursday for the town's official menorah lighting. It will be at 6:00 PM to celebrate the last night of Hanukkah. There will be hot cider, Hanukkah doughnuts, and a performance by Jewish recording artist Tali Yes. General parking for the event will be at Town Hall, 100 Town Hall Drive, or behind the Town Connector Building, which is 240 Town Hall Drive. Accessible parking is available at Indian Creek Trailhead for those displaying disability placards. Dive into the holiday spirit by visiting the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center for its annual Swim with Santa event on Friday, December 15th. As of this afternoon, there are still some one-hour slots available for you to, for you to register your child online. The Morrisville Senior Center Holiday Luncheon and Gift Exchange will be Wednesday, December 20th, from 1 till 3. Sign up online for that. And as always, our resident advisory committee meetings, like our council meetings, are open to the public. Please consider checking our online calendar and attending one of those meetings. There is something for everyone, from environment and sustainability, to public safety, to parks and recreation and zoning. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. While there, sign up for our Next Week in Morrisville email, which comes out every Friday. And also download Morrisville Central on your Android or iPhone to have all this info at your fingertips. Now, at this time, we're at Council and Manager Comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
I just want to, first of all, say happy holidays, happy Hanukkah to our community. Want to congratulate, I did have one thing I wanted to say real quickly. The only thing I would, I would say is that today, the town staff, Rick Ralph and Billy Whitehead spoke at the IDC, which is the huge tech, 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 on the future of connected and seminar, and it was unbelievable. I'm so proud of our team, really leading the forge around the country as top leaders for our smart cities. So I was just so proud of that and I want to thank everyone for all the holiday events. I did want to say, I wanted to just take a minute to just say something about Councilmember Robati and former Mayor Pro Tem Liz Johnson. First of all, I'll start with Liz Johnson. I've I've served with Liz Johnson now for 13 years, which is the full 13 that I've been on the council. And I didn't even pull up my computer, I'm just going to come from my memory bank. But I think that Liz Johnson, in my opinion, exemplifies what elected officials should be like in terms of just how seriously they take the role and responsibility. And so I just, I'm very fortunate that I have the honor of working with you for my entire term. And I'm looking forward to working with you in the next two years. I want to thank you for that, you and your family. And with Councilmember Robati, I just want to say that you have brought a lot of passion and leadership to this council. You really stepped up during our town manager search. You're patient, you deal with me a lot, and you also are my pickleball partner now every now and then. So, but on a more serious note, I really want to congratulate you. The biggest election and the most important election is the reelection because you're now coming back in and the people of Morrisville will put you back on the best city council in the state. We have a great team here, so just want to wish everyone here a happy holidays, thank the staff for a great year, and looking forward to the next two years. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Garamella.
So I don't, I don't know how to even follow that, but anyhow, I want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Garamella and Councilmember Robati on their re-elections. I know, I'll get used to it. I'll, we'll all get used to it. We've got to change a lot of business cards now and stuff like that, but it's, that's what it's all about and that's all good. So congratulations. I meant what I said before. I'm more hopeful and more excited this term than, than when I was in the beginning because I, I know the possibilities that are out there for us and for our community, for our residents. And so I am, I am incredibly hopeful and excited for the future. So again, just thank you to everyone for making this meeting so special tonight, too, to our staff that, that, that made this meeting very meaningful to me and I'm sure to the two of them as well. I do, I do want to say happy holidays to everyone. I hope our staff, I hope you all get to enjoy the holidays with your family. You, you sacrifice a great deal, or no, your family sacrificed a great deal. So I hope you all get to spend some time with family and downtime and relax. And maybe it's a good thing we have a whole month now before we all come back for a council meeting. That'll give you some, some rest in the next couple of weeks. And also just want to send a message, I spoke about this at the last council meeting, we lost a really dear Morrisville resident earlier this month. Tet Walton passed away and I was able to attend her funeral service last week, but both, both the Walton family and the Singh family, Dr. Nurender Singh, we also lost him last month. Both those families are, I am sure, hurting in this holiday season. And unfortunately, there are other families that are affected by a loss, either recently or for me, 22 years ago, and it still affects me during the holiday season. So for all those that have lost someone and have a missing loved one for the holidays, I wish you all peace and comfort in the, at this time and always, and then happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
First, I would say happy holidays and I could not attend the tree lighting, but I heard very good things about it and looking forward for the menorah. Yes, I agree. The staff worked very hard and it is, we need some downtime. And I hope you guys get downtime. But I'm very excited the next four years that there's so many good projects in the pipeline. And it's just a matter of when do we have that ribbon cutting? That's the excitement that I have, you know? Lot of work for Brandon and his team, but I'm optimistic, you know, they will get it done. So it's the amount of, incredible amount of work that has gone, I think we will be reaping those fruits for the years to come. And second, I would say, I was really touched when I had invited Dr. Sharma, and he's 97. And he's my biggest fan and I, it was more emotional for me when I remember when Al Oak passed away, people were going, you know, and giving their condolences. When I did the same, he caught my hand and started crying. And, and at that time, you know, and I had given him the picture just a few days back that had taken, and so that triggered. And then when I was coming, I wanted to just ensure, you know, he has a good, you know, healthy. And next time, I would be able to still continue to do it for the years, years to come. And his enthusiasm in 97 is amazing. And so that was pretty touching for me and it was more personal that I had invited him. And then the other one, more personal was your mom, you know, Liz's mom coming and talking, you know, like, this is, these are occasions where, you know, you meet and have, we don't, our families never meet, you know, we're always, you know, talking. They know about us, the phones will be ringing, you know, talks will be going on. But you really come to meet people and, and my mom literally hijacked the food side of it, you know, and I was, I had no say. I called Brandon and I said, you know, it's not my option anymore, you know? And it worked out, you know? Otherwise, the food would not be sufficient, for sure. And they had better varieties and she takes pride in that. So that is one thing I'm always very grateful to selflessly, she does it. And again, you know, looking forward and a lot of good work and happy holidays.
Yeah, the stamuses were really good. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by myself.
Thank you. I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone. This year has been very exciting for the town. We've been able to deliver quite a few new assets. We also have a very bright future for next year and the years after that. I'd like to thank all of our advisory committee members for their service to the town. We were able to meet with most of the committees as a, as a council. I think we have one more committee meeting this week. And then we will have visited each of the committees and really leaned in to hear their, their concerns, their aspirations, and their vision of the town, which makes us all a better town. So I really appreciate their work and I appreciate the work of the staff. We've had quite a few changes this year and we are coming very strong. And I'm looking forward to our retreat in January. I think we have some challenges ahead because it just keeps getting more expensive, no matter what we're doing. So we'll have to have some really good conversations about what makes Morrisville special. So I hope each and every, every one of you, if you're traveling, please be careful. Everybody's moving. And just take a few seconds to think before you react to some things because not only if you're in a moving car, but also if you're around others, think first before you speak because everyone's going through something that you might not see. So thank you.
Thank you. It's my turn, followed by Councilmember Robati. I'd like to also echo what I've heard, which is a big thank you to staff for all their hard work this year and all the time spent away from their families. Can't tell you how much we really appreciate everything that you all do for us and our community. As Councilmember Johnson mentioned, there were some people who passed kind of recently. I want to also share the fact that Ethel Holland, who just recently had her 100th birthday, we celebrated that at the Shiloh Community. She just recently passed as well. Thoughts to her friends and family at this sad time. I want to say that I was grateful to our NC House Representative Maria Savania for taking time to join us this morning to discuss our town's needs and goals for collaborating with the legislature to serve our community now that she is our House Representative. I think it's really important that she reached out to us practically to try to make that happen. She came back tonight to perform a swearing in as well, and we appreciate her friendship to our town. I was excited to celebrate another very productive collaboration this afternoon at the groundbreaking for Morrisville's first middle school, which will also serve as part of our Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnologies High School. There are too many partners to name, but rest assured, a lot of important connections were made to serve our community. A friendly, diverse, and welcoming community, which places a very high priority on family and quality education. I want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a very happy 2020 more. See what I did there? At this time, next, Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my friends who was here tonight, we buried his son yesterday. And I told him, of course, that he did not have to come tonight, but he said that he could not stand to be alone in his house. And his grief, his wounds, of course, are the freshest, but you know, I think that a lot of us this time of year, you know, we think back on people that we've loved, that we've lost. It's a, it's, can be a very difficult time for a lot of people. And, you know, I think that people don't always know where to go to access mental health services when they need them. And so I just wanted to put this out there that things have come a long way since back in the day when you used to have to, you know, go down a list and call up therapists individually. You can get a referral for a therapist if you need one right from your primary care physician these days. They do it right over here at Avance in Morrisville, top-notch therapy, ask me how I know. And, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, if you're struggling, if you're sad, you're not alone. I know, I almost said Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. I know.
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah, I know that Councilmember Johnson talked, you know, I know she's talking about her dad, I miss my mom a lot this time of year. And, you know, just, you know, as much as you can, try not to be an island, try to reach out for the help that you need when you need it. And I guess I really brought the room down there, but happy holidays to all. I appreciate, I mean, you know this, but I appreciate all of you and all of your staff so much. And, and, you know, the six of us, we fight like cats in a sack sometimes, but I really do appreciate all of you very much. And I'm looking forward so much to working with you for the next four years.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Anne, you got me a little teary-eyed over here, but I wanted to congratulate my fellow council members that got reelected. I'm really looking forward to serving with you guys for another four years. And I'll tie that into something that Anne was saying is you guys really do matter to me. And with the staff, like, being here tonight and saying hi to everyone, shaking people's hands, getting hugs, I mean, all of that stuff really matters. That human connection. And I'll have to say, just personally, it means, you know, you guys mean a lot to me in that, like, I work from home, so I don't get that social interaction through work. And then, like, Anne, Anne, Liz mentioned the holidays, you know, I lost both my parents a few years ago. And, and, and it's, holidays are hard. That first, the first Christmas after my parent, my mom passed away, I knew I wouldn't be able to, because my dad had passed away two years before, and then my mom passed away. And I knew I would just really have a hard time that Christmas. So I made travel arrangements for my son and I to go to Iceland for, over Christmas. Of course, it was dark for most of the time, but it was still like a great, great trip going there, especially with my son. And, you know, all the connections we get in the community and, you know, it's, it makes life worth living, working together with people, with something that, on something that's bigger than ourselves. And so I value you guys. And then also looking at Betsy in the audience talking about book club tomorrow night, you know, that's another community that is, the women in Kids Creek mean a lot to me as well. I had one more thing I was going to say, now I can't remember. I went, oh, happy holidays. Enjoy your time with your family and your friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Zudma, anything from staff, sir?
Congratulations to our retained council, to all of you. We're glad to be continuing to work with you. Congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem Garamella. Would like to echo the appreciation of staff that took time to get this ready for this evening. You know, they took a lot of pride in that, wanted it to be special. And so I'm going to misname, so I won't call names, but there was a lot of people that were involved with making that happen. Other than that, I'd like to say happy holidays to each of you, certainly to our residents and particularly to our staff. I'm so appreciative of the team that we have and the hard work that many of you have spoken about today that goes on every single day. I'm very appreciative for them. Thank you.
Well said, sir. We're now adjournment then. I'd like to thank our audience and our residents and our business community for your support this year, which has been a great one. We hope you plan to join us again on Thursday for the menorah lighting and then again in 2024. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.morrisvillnc.gov/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and a second to adjourn this year?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second to call it a year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. It is 8:09, we are adjourned. See you in 2020 more.